I'll just add one thing on the you're unlikely as far as I, one of the toughest questions we get is when, right?
Yeah.
We are unlikely to nail down a specific timeframe, particularly this early, because it'll be wrong. Because as Leroy talked about, the management of those construction crews, we run into an easement problem here. Or we run into a permit, you know, because of a creek or what have you, environmental permit or whatever it is. We move those crews, we're going to keep them working. So we, they might have them pause on that particular work order, move over to a different zone. They will start working on that particular zone because we're able to keep moving at that point. And so we're careful, I mean, I understand everybody wants a date, but that's why we give the end of 2024 date is kind of that given. So then you can work yourself backward from there that some people are going to be earlier in 24. Some, you know, will be later, but nobody should be later than that end of 2024 date.
And the houses that I can see, okay, that are going to be connected next month, okay, those, that's, that's sort of that zone that I can give you definite answers. Beyond that, it starts, it starts to stack.
See the trucks in your neighborhood, it's close?
That's a good sign.
You start seeing those pedestals out in front of your house and they start putting those in, you know you're really close.
Yeah. Question. If, let's just say if I lived right on the edge of that line and like my neighbors were being serviced, could that be something where I could reach out to you and say, hey, don't forget me? Is there, maybe I have to put more money in for you to hook me up, but is there, is there that possibility?
What we're trying to do is, is make note of addresses that don't have service but aren't in that current grant area. Because there is another round of application coming up through the offices statewide broadband.
Right.
That application comes out next year and it's another ninety, at least $95 million. It could be more coming from the federal government from Maryland. So yes, we want to hear from you if you're on the edge of that and not currently in it because we're trying to locate all of, all of the unserved.
Well, I currently live right in Maradona and I see it's boxed out.
Do you have Comcast available right now?
It's Comcast, yeah.
So that, the issue is everything that we're building with the grants has to be unserved. But there will be a time where we'll, we'll try to work to bring other people in who want to come in.
But engineering does try to, people that are in arms distance of those unserved. If it's practical, you know, on our, but that is on our own dime. The state, the, the state funding that's provided, you know, can't fund, you know, serving those quote served areas. But if we feel like, you know, it's something that we can do on our own dime, we'll look at it.
I was going to say is that if, if you had a, a client that lived like a mile down the road and says, hey, look, I will pay you to put internet in. Like, you know what I mean? Would that be an option?
We definitely can talk. I don't know where it fits in the schedule.
Okay. I, I, I'm just asking because that's going to be a question.
No, definitely reach out, definitely reach out because we are interested in identifying, specifically identifying these, these areas that do not have service.
Or that are interested in our service, right?
That we make sure that in our total design, that we are accounting for sufficient capacity. So that's good, that's good information to know and.
We have those conversations all the time, but usually once we get to the cost, it usually kind of trims that back. Because that's when everybody realizes how much a mile costs.
Right.
Quite honestly, but yes, we have those all, people ask us that all the time and sometimes we're able to work it out. But sometimes the cost is just a bridge too far.
Good comment, Matt. I'm sorry, Sean, go ahead, Sean.
I just have a quick question. I, I have a cousin that lived in Whitehaven and they have, she has direct TV. If she wanted to get, I don't know if you're going that far down, but I'm just giving you an example.
I believe that Whitehaven is on the edge of the grant area, right? So I'm, I'm not sure.
Example, so someone who has direct TV or what's up with.
If it's like a satellite dish that it might not be considered served.
Satellite dish and where are you going to serve at? Can they get rid of their satellite dish and get to you?
If we're able to get to them, yeah. So I would strongly suggest that whoever that is, you know, if you get, if you get examples of, of residents that want to know, we're happy to take a look at that.
Stream direct TV, they could stream direct TV, they could stream Netflix, Hulu.
We're not offering any actual TV programming with our service. Right, yeah, so they'd have to find the different streaming services that they would use. But we're offering internet and then we are now also offering a VoIP, voice over internet phone service for some customers who would like to hook their phone up that way.
Matt?
Just add, a lot of the questions that have been asked here is what we've also been hearing at town hall, community style meetings that we've been holding in other counties. And I'm pretty sure we're planning on doing that in this grant area. So once that becomes available, make sure the council knows.
To work with, yeah. Those of you representing that area to identify some.
Please.
We actually held one at Hebron there for the plantation Webster Tates. Very successful, very, how they attended and a lot of people actually signed up that night, so.
So Tim just reminded me, when we got the FY22 grants, we sent a postcard to every single location that was included in those grants. And we haven't done that yet for the FY23 because we just got the grant. But we're still waiting for the state to send back the counter signed MOU with us. But I'm going to make a note and we will definitely send a postcard to every single person whose address was in the location for these grants, letting them know that we're in the process and encouraging them to log in and put their information into our website.
So you're saying it is an internet line, but it's not for streaming.
It is for streaming.
It is for.
It's just, we're not offering, you know, some of the.
We don't sell the packages, but streaming TV packages, they can go out and use your YouTube TV.
Yeah, so we're not, yeah, we're not providing cable TV. We're just providing the ability to get onto the internet and bring things down.
Okay. Do you have an estimate of how many homes you think you'll be reaching?
Well, we're going to pass 12,000.
Twelve forty-seven?
Seventy-six locations. So that's mostly homes, yeah. 1,276 that we identified in the grant area. Now again, as Leroy starts to build that out, engineering wise, we might be able to grab a few more locations along that edge if, if they're unserved and we find them when we're going through.
Are you on the Maryland broadband trunk lines or do you have your own?
We mostly have our own, but we certainly do cooperate with Maryland broadband as well. I mean, where it makes sense. But, you know, we have had a longstanding agreement with Maryland broadband. We do fiber swaps with Maryland broadband on a, on a large scale. And there's some Maryland broadband lines that were ran down in this area that we are looking at utilizing. We'll just have to do the math on that, but we might use those to help us out.
Yes, Josh.
I was just going to say, you know, I grew up in that, in that aqua polygon there on that left side in Athol outside Maradona, the very left side of that. You know, that's an area that, I remember, I remember being on dial up, I grew up there. You know, there's a lot of folks that live there now, you know, that was a, that's an area that has just increased in poverty, unfortunately. You know, the folks I still, that I, that are friends, I still live there, you know, they're, they're very much on the edge. If, if there's anything that you can include in your, you know, if you put together a note card, if you can, you mentioned the federal assistance or other kind of assistance there. I think that's an area that, you know, they, they could really, I, I think some, some of them I've talked to, there are, they've looked at the, the amount, they're like, I don't know if I want to spend that extra amount. Well, partly they want to, they just, you know, they just can't.
Whether they can afford it or not, right? And I think with the combination of the federal FCC program, the state money, and I'm not sure, that, that'll last. I'm not sure how indefinite the state money is that's being paid for out of federal infrastructure money as well. And then the money we're offering, I think someone can get it down to about forty some dollars a package.
Thirty for the federal, fifteen from the state, fifteen from us. So, I mean, yeah, you're getting it down to what, basically 25 bucks or so on the low, on the, on the entry level program. And, and I think you actually bring up a good point because we do have it on our roadmap to advertise. What our member service team does when people, you know, they will check new orders for service for anybody that's on the heating assistance program because we, you know, we have that because of our, the nature of our business with the electric utility. And so if they see that, they will reach out to people. But one of the things that we've, we've discussed internally is, okay, that's great for people who order service, but those who maybe are sitting on the sideline, maybe we need to advertise. And so we are going to be looking at efforts to get that word out to those that maybe didn't sign up, that they know that those discounts are available to them.
Yeah, and that, and you're, you know, the line extension fees, getting rid of that long lane, like that's a game changer for a lot of the folks there. So that's, I mean, thank you for that, that's, that's really helpful. I'll also say, I want to make sure the council knew, you know, they had their annual meeting about five, six weeks ago. I don't know how you fit, was it thousands of people, there's a ridiculous amount of people.
We were, we were oversubscribed for annual meeting this year compared to what we thought we were going to have, but mostly about broadband.
I was happy to represent the council there, going there in Easton, but, you know, they had a lot of great information. I really love the fact that they're thinking, they're, they're very thoughtful about what they're thinking for, for our area of the lower shore. So I.
We'll probably be back down here next year. We're kind of going back and forth between Salisbury and Easton so that our members from all over the shore can participate in the meetings.
Pacific Center's a great place, we'd love to have you there. Thank you all for today.
I just wanted to ask, that, that section on the east side by Route 12, is that, does that have Union Church Road on there? Do you know offhand, I mean, if, I'm just curious.
It runs between, I looked that up right before we came down here.
I mean, I can't, I couldn't zoom in and tell, I mean, you don't have to tell me right now, you can tell me later if, if you want, but.
I, I'm not specific on the road name down there.
It was, it runs between Saint Luke's Road and Route 12.
Yeah.
So if you, is your, the road you're identifying somewhere between Luke's and Route 12?
Yes, it is.
It should be in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Another question.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Holloway really wants to hook up his electric vehicle at his house. Do you have any electric charging vehicles? I'm just kidding.
You need to clear that statement up.
Just kidding, just kidding.
Well, again, congratulations and we're glad to see you here. We appreciate you taking the time and we look forward to an update.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda we have is the proposed update for the electrical board. Mr. Illuminati is here. Glad to have you here. Yeah, make sure you have a mic and let the public know who you are, your, your position for us. Thank you very much for that, Dean.
Andrew Illuminati County Attorney's Office.
Rob Simmons, President of Wycomico County Electric Board.
Donald Tribe, Secretary of the Wycomico County Electrical Board.
Thanks for being here, sorry to hold you up.
Problem.
Andrew.
So the proposed legislation that you have before you is a work product of over years worth of the electrical board meeting and reviewing the county code. So 2021, the state gutted the rights of the counties to test their un-electricians, categorize them and issue licenses. As a result, that's now all done at the state level. But the state preserved this local registration opportunity so that individuals still have to register locally in order to perform services in Wycomico County. The code is just not compatible with state law. So the majority of it is just getting the terminology that the state's now using, allowing the county to now register individuals rather than test them and qualify them. And the reason why the language doesn't really change is we're actually are using the term registration in Wycomico County, but it's referring to licensing. So the majority of the language is just perfunctory, keeping everything in check. Then there was another couple of sections that was just, what's a best practice going forward? The main one on that was electrical inspectors. So the county itself does not employ an electrical inspector. So we have building inspectors, but there's no electrical inspector. So there's about, now there's two agencies that service Wycomico County who are electrical inspectors. And to use the analogy they used with me, you have to be a lawyer before you can become a judge. Well, you don't have to be a master electrician to be electrical inspector. Which seems sort of weird in that, well, why would that be the requirement? So there, the state left open the opportunity to, for the county to test electrical inspectors. And what the county is doing is the county wants to do that, but also recognize that you have individuals from, you know, Greater Delmarva, Delaware, Virginia, who may want to inspect for one of these companies and extend that reciprocity that if you're a master in one of those states, that, that will qualify you under Maryland. And the other thing is that to be an inspector, you have to be able to sort of shelve, put aside your ability to inspect your own work. So, you know, using Vice President Baker, he doesn't get on his other position, make an arrest, go to court and also be the judge of the case and say, hey, I did a great job with this traffic stop, found some drugs and now you're guilty. Other people come through in that process and make that decision. So, so an individual can't install their own electrical work, come back and say, I'm also an inspector and I did a great job on this. It passes inspection. So you could still be a Virginia electrician, but you can't be a Maryland electrician while you're also inspecting, if that makes sense. And then recognizing that people love to relocate to our great area, live half hour from the beach, better area. If you're from one of the other states, the board in its discretion can say, okay, well, what are the requirements to be a master electrician in your area? If you want to inspect here. And then at the board's discretion, in addition to the test, they can say, okay, you're being, you've been a master in New Jersey for 20 years. And when I say master, that's the highest level. It's master, apprentice, journeyman, apprentice, correct?
Master, journeyman, apprentice, yes.
Okay. So those are the terms that the state uses and that's why I've been using that colloquialism as the highest degree of electrician. So the nuts and bolts of it, I'd ask these guys because I thought I'd still learn how to be able to do more than just turn on light switches in my house. But a year with them, I'd still know better. So if you have specifics about how to do it, these are the guys.
Question.
Sean.
Are you saying that if someone has to do electrical work, they have to get a permit? Say they install far extinguisher lights, exec lights, do they have to have a permit to do that?
So if you need to work, the, the interpretation the law department is taking is that when individuals working on their own house, they need to get a permit and they still need to get inspected, but they don't need to be a master electrician. Or they don't need to be overseen by someone. And that's currently the case whether this new legislation goes in effect or not, correct?
I believe so. The state sees it as anyone who's doing, any work that's done, period, has to have a permit. And then some of the other neighboring counties, it's current limited. Where if it's a simple, I use Worcester County for example, if it's a single, simple 20 amp circuit, doesn't have to be inspected. They, or doesn't need a permit and be inspected. And that's what we're, here, we're trying to remain to have, if you're going to work on your own home, you don't have to be licensed is what we're, we're at. But it's just, you, it still should be inspected.
So if I have, if we hire someone to do a job, they have to go and get a permit first?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. And it's for your own safety.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not that often that when the state gets involved in, in people's business and affairs that they make it, it's a little cynical, but they make it better instead of worse. I, I mean, in my profession, I've experienced that firsthand. So I'm just wondering from your perspective, is there anything that you anticipate that, that we may have to be aware of in the future? Especially in this next legislative session where maybe some of these more recent laws may need to be adjusted, amended or corrected?
One thing I will say, I give a, a kudos to our local representatives that are at the state level. They've been in touch with us individually, text messages and emails with things coming up to say, this bill's going to be read, is there anything that you oppose? Here's a new copy from committee.
Okay.
And ask our input. When it came through with the first, the Maryland Electricians Act came through, a lot of us were left in the dark. And it just kind of hit, nobody really, this was during COVID. So there was a, a lot of chance for us to go to Annapolis and say, this is not a good idea. So instead of going reverse with that, contacting legislators, specifically Mary Beth Croze and Carl Anerton, they have been in touch with us in each, each of the, I guess, superseding legislative sessions.
Okay.
Because there were two, the, the bill keeps getting amended.
Right, right.
It was a bill that went through and then they'd find a language in it and then they'd pass another amendment and then another amendment and then as so forth. There's another, this, there was a bill and it was just to change the language from, was it?
Shelve to uninsured.
Yeah, from unlicensed to uninsured or shelved to uninsured. And so, yeah. There probably will be, but we'll be here to keep you.
Yeah, sure, feel free to let us know. And of course, you, you've got the right idea in dealing with the Eastern Shore delegation because that is, it's paramount.
So you guys want to have the ability to test an inspector? Is that what you're saying? That you want to be able to test inspector to make sure it's up to snuff?
So.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is because I know there's electricians that were journeyman and now they're master electricians. And so we've got a lot of master electricians that might not have the same hours. And I guess that, is that, is that why you're asking to test for, just test these master electricians to make sure they are what you need?
And correct me if I'm wrong, but we want to make it more uniform so that there's no, if you look at the current code now, it's vague as to who can be an inspector. And we want to make it more uniform and make sure that the person that's doing the inspection, we believe them, they should be master electricians.
Okay.
Yep.
Hold on, but so it doesn't say you have to be, I'm sorry. So it doesn't say you have to be a master electrician right now? And you, okay.
Nope, it doesn't. It just says you have to be so.
That's what, I, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding you guys.
And neighboring counties have done the same thing where they've mastered, require a master electrician. I don't want someone who holds a license lesser than mine inspecting my work. That is my opinion and pretty much a unanimous decision, a unanimous opinion of the other members of the board.
That's, that's how I feel.
Well, we, we do appreciate you coming in, Andrew, appreciate it. Anytime you pass legislation, you always want to make sure that you're in touch with the industries that are most affected. That, that's a recipe for disaster if you don't do that. You're certain to fail, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, we appreciate it. And I guess with this will, how will this come back to us now?
It will come back as, you know, a bill for introduction.
Right, at your next meeting?
Yes, and they're, you know, keep in mind, there are two legislative bills here.
Right. Yes.
So that's the second part. If there's any more questions on sort of, and it's split for a reason, I'll get into it. But the meat of what we just discussed is making the county code comport with the state law, but also beefing up the inspector section.
Right.
That's one legislative bill, that's the bigger of the two. The second is revisiting the permit fees. So, and that's in the brief book. That was segregated because I know there might be a lot of discussion on that. But that's something that the board spent a lot of time researching and looking at. So in the brief book, there's a complete, every county in the state breaks, is broken out into how they charge their permit fees. And I may be able to plug this in and get it up on the big screen.
We got it here.
Yep, we do have it.
Okay. So the board is proposing to convert to a commercial versus residential. So you can see that that is about two thirds of the counties, at least half, follow that method. Not looking to make it, the proposal is not to make it as shocking as Montgomery County where it's a thousand dollars. But it takes into account that right now, if Walmart wants to install 200 electrical outlets versus I want to install one in my house, the fee's the exact same. And it's different level of, it sort of recognizes that residential should be different than commercial. And the proposal is that the residential go to $35 and that the commercial be $70. And there was discussion about that, but it wasn't lightly passed. They also doubled their own registration fees. So their bi-annual registration fees, they doubled that as well. So part of the reason for these fees is that there are staff members in the planning and zoning department that they keep track of all the permits, our permits opened, is they keep track of the registration. And for the longest time, the fees haven't changed since 2000. So the fees were paying for these salaried employees and covering the duties of the board, them coming to the meetings, taking minutes and keeping track of all, of the individuals that were registered, all issuing the permits, making sure the inspectors did their part. And as the salaries have gone up over time, but the fees have remained the same, the fees have not increased and the amount of electrical work hasn't increased. And as a result, the salary has had to been offset with tax revenue. But with them increasing their fees for registering, bi-annual registration, going to the, increasing the residential, which the proposal, if you adjust for the inflation over the last 23 years, is right on the money. It would be like $33.90 and we're projecting $35 to take into account the next couple of years. Not saying to touch it after that. We could probably go another 23 years. But bring it up to code, bring it up to speed so that those positions that were originally envisioned to be self-sustaining through registration of electricians and through permit fees could at least be maintained and recover some other revenue. The reason it's split into two different is there might be considerations where you go through your discussion. You say, well, 70s may be too high, let's amend it downwards or let's increase this or let's keep homeowners the same. Or maybe you don't want to split residential, commercial. But the intent of the board was, the first bill is really non-controversial and what, how we viewed that you would see it and that it's amending the code to keep up with state law. Whereas this might be something that you want to be amend more, so it's a smaller bill that will allow you to easily, when you discuss that, look at those sections. So I just want to reiterate, they doubled their fees so they didn't just say, well, let's pass it solely on to the consumer. They're doubling their registration fees as well and.
And I would assume too that you gentlemen have talked to the industry, I mean, you've talked to the developers and any, anyone that may be involved in this and the contractors. And I'm assuming you have a really good feel that this is, will be most likely well accepted within the county?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's really not an issue with it, with, with the counties. One of the things, we, we want to keep the residential low because we want everybody that wants a receptacle put in or two receptacles put in, something to be able to come and get the permits so their house is safe. But with the commercial, I mean, it's, it's a lot easier to pass it on to the commercial buildings and be able to get the revenue. With that, as far as my business goes, I know it's not an issue. Everybody I, I talked to, it's not an issue. So we don't want to go too high and try to just go with, and reasonable. I mean, if you're doing a, you're putting in more than one receptacle most of the time.
Right.
And you're doing a lot more work. But we do want to keep the residential somewhat low so we keep everybody safe and they, they're going to get inspected and they're getting the permits that they need to get.
That permit fee is not per piece of electrical work. It covers everything. So it's beneficial to do as much work as you can under one permit fee and it reduces it greatly. So as I said earlier, Walmart wants to install 200 receptacles. Under the new commercial, it only goes up to $70, not $70 per receptacle. So it's not anti-business. You can see Washington County adds $300 per 100 amps. They add, for residential, they add 10 cents a square foot on top of the $65. So this is still below what a lot of other counties are doing, you know, large counties, rural counties. But it brings in line with what's more becoming the standard throughout the state.
Any other questions? You're a hundred percent right in putting with the two bills, I get that completely.
Yeah, I, I, I like how you broke it up with the, the residential and commercial because, you know, I, as a small business owner, it's like that, that, you know, if I had to pay 70 or 80 dollars to get a permit, it, you know, that just adds to the bottom line and, and I have to pass that on. Now you can pass it on, it's just what if that 80 dollars was just that enough to break you, you know? But I like how you did break, make that a much smaller bill. Yeah, I, I, I like it so far. I don't, I don't think there's a, a real problem with this. And, and I will call, you know, a couple of contractors tomorrow and, and find out what they think about it. But I think, I think it's fair. I think it's fair, you know, $70 to inspect every single receptacle in my commercial building. I mean, that's a pretty good price, so anyway.
Well, that wouldn't be the inspection fee.
Oh, God.
So $70 is the cost of the permit.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
The, we have no control over what the inspection agency charges for their services. That's, that's different.
Okay.
Some counties, and I believe it's tall, but it, they have, their inspection fee is in with their permit.
Right.
They, they pay the inspector, it's a third party inspector. But here, no, that's because they're a separate business. So. So just so you're aware of that. And one thing I want to add on top of Mr. Tribek, where he was talking about keeping the residential cost down because we don't want a lot of unpermitted work. We don't want people getting, creating situation where it's too expensive. It's $35. Right now it's $25. I'm talking about a $10 increase. Just to make sure that everything is done up, up the code. It's the homeowner's insurance that if something goes sideways, was this inspected? Did you have a permit? And that, and go on top of Mr. Illuminati, you know, that may be for a circuit for your shed. It may be for a pole or a boat dock or your entire house. It's the same fee.
Sewing fan.
All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thanks again for taking the time to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to have counsel, I don't mind.
If, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I think so. Wouldn't hurt. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the discussion for the Formula Drill Academy site, how we might maybe repurpose it for the Humane Society. Ms. Kim Nock.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Last but not least, right?
Yes, I'm very patient.
Did everybody get a copy of this in their email? And if would you want a copy? Can I pass these out? So I'm Kim Nock, the executive director of the Humane Society, Wycomico County. I think that we've spoken a lot to you about how we've outgrown our shelter. Our county has doubled, almost doubled in size since our shelter was built and we're running things a little differently now. So we were kind of approaching the idea of adding on to our shelter when we discovered that that's not going to be an option. So when I looked at the Drill Academy property, I've always thought, even when I first became the director, gosh, that would be the most perfect property for us to sit on because it kind of sits out of the way. Now they're starting to actually develop the industrial park around the airport. So it's becoming, you know, a lot more traffic there. So I did speak to Mike Lewis and said, what, what are you doing with that property? Because I know that they had kind of dedicated for him to use and.
For those that don't know, it's, this is a property just south of the airport.
So it's 500 Goldman Lane, kind of sits back.
I've been there.
Yep. So they tore down the building and the only thing that still sits is the lights and stuff back there. They tore the buildings down. Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, that's all been torn down. So the only thing left, you know, is the, the infrastructure, the lights, the, the fire system, all that stuff is still there. So that's what we're here to request in order to solicit the bond bills that we're, we're looking in the state funding. We need your support and it'll look really good if we have the land dedicated to put this shelter on. We are to the point where we have the blueprints drawn up. There may be a few tweaks here and there. And we're going to start, you know, soliciting the plans on who's, who's going to do it and the actual cost. We are not quite sure on the cost of this point up towards several shelters. One that's kind of comparable is Hartford County. It was built four years ago. It is 19,000 square feet. This, what we've proposed is between 12 and 13,000 square feet. They came in at 7 million for that shelter. So I think we're looking, you know, it was four years ago before everything started going crazy. I think we're looking somewhere between five and seven million. I am not trying to build the Taj Mahal. I want something that is family friendly, but can service our community. We've outgrown our shelter in every way, in being in capacity, in our clinic capacity. And just in general, our shelter was never built to control illness and disease. So this shelter is actually designed to be able to be isolated in different areas, a lot more smaller areas to hold in. So when we do have bouts of sickness, we can contain it. As it is now, everything goes through the same air filtering system. And if one animal gets upper respiratory, they're all going to go through upper respiratory. So it's just a constant battle of battling kennel cough and upper respiratory. We currently have over 300 kittens out in foster right now and probably five or six dogs out in foster homes being raised outside of the shelter because we don't have enough space for that. In the past, those animals would all have just been euthanized.
What's the plans for the shelter where you're at now?
So that, that's all up in the air and that would all be what we would be looking to you guys for. I would assume that it would get repurposed in some way. I mean, it sits on county property. So I'm, I'm not even sure what our options are as far as that.
This property here, are you looking for us to lease it to you or do you want it donated to you?
Ultimately, it would look a lot better if it was donated to us, but I, I certainly understand that that might not be an option. You know, we're open to either. We would prefer it to be donated to us. So we have, we can show that to the state. If not, you know, a lease, just like we have now, we have a 50 year lease right now.
What do you mean by the county's doubled in size? The county's not doubled in size?
The population of the county has.
No, I don't think so. It wasn't, it's about 112,000 now, 103,000.
It was like 69.
Yeah, so it's not doubled in size.
I said almost doubled.
That's population, not size.
I'm talking, I'm talking about population.
God.
Andrew, a question, Andrew.
I'm talking about population.
Probably a question, I would guess, from what Joe suggested.
How about animal owners?
Yeah. How does it come into play if you're familiar, not to put you on the spot, but as far as a donation compared to leasing it for a dollar a year or something? Have you ever, I, I'm not sure if you've even had the experience to, to know what the differences might be.
I don't. I'd have to look into that and see if it was donated to be title work and things of that nature and the county. So this is for animal control or this is for?
This is for the Humane Society, which will also house animal control.
That's, once it's donated, I imagine it's, we put a reverter clause so that they no longer use the property for animal, for Humane Society animal control purposes, that it would revert back to the county. That way it can't be sold by them for unprofit. So for example, say, when was the first one built?
Oh gosh, I wrote it down because I knew you were going to ask me that.
Let's just say.
94, 95.
They come and say, we need another spot and it's a couple of miles down the road and the county donated it. If there's a reverter clause, it would just come back to the county.
That's what happens with our Board of Education. That's what happens with the schools. We get the school property back if they quit using, using it.
That's a thing to consider is whether or not we would want it back at such an isolated use. I don't know if that would be a benefit or a detriment to the county in the long run.
There may be advantages that Pink Miss Olun could discuss to donating it. I don't, I'm not positive on that, but something we can look into.
Well, you say it could be helpful for, you know, as a donate to the nonprofit, they can use that as, they can show that as match in order to get.
I get that. That is, that is an incentive. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's the main thing that the state representatives are looking for. And we have spoken to all of the state representatives and they're all in full support of this. We did solicit the first bond bill, but we didn't even have blueprints at that time. So we, we knew we were going to get denied for that. But now we have the blueprints and I think we can submit again in September, maybe.
Have you reviewed this with the executive branch?
Yes, yes.
Because my, my question is what maybe other options the county might be looking to for as far as using that property? Or are we saying we have no use whatsoever for it?
So we, we met Julie out on the property and a few other people and she seemed to be in full support of it.
The one, one hiccup in it could be it's right at the end of a runway if they ever decide to extend the runway.
So it's not an FAA overlay though?
Right.
So they would have no control. See where the shelter sits now is in FAA overlay.
And if they extend the runway, it would be in the overlay.
Okay.
I actually talked, I was talking to the airport manager one time when I was there last. And he said that the runway will never be extended anymore because of the, the airplane takeoffs. They're just, they take off so much better than, that's what I was told. Now, maybe I'm wrong.
And Chris Davis was also included in on, on these plans.
He was, okay.
And he's, he's very much in support of it.
That is a good, that's a good.
The airport was, the airport was, was, it was discussed with the airport.
Well, you know, we know things change.
You're right. You're right. Things change.
Yeah, I always thought there and has also been changed since then.
I always thought the runway was in a more, was more, a more easterly direction, not so much in, in this line of path.
They got two.
They got two. You'd have to, you'd have to, I'd go out there just about two or three times a week to the.
They do have, they do have one that.
Anyway, but you're saying that Chris Davidson is telling you that this is in no way going to be an issue for the future.
Yes. He was actually a big part of us asking for this.
Okay. Ideal, I mean, property needs to be used for something. It's just been sitting there, sitting forever.
Well, there were also already the approvals for the task force for the sheriff's department building to be placed there. So this is, you know, that, that was all pre-approved.
True. True.
What's, what kind of a timeframe do you think? Because a lot of this is going to be legal now, right?
Would have to start depending on which direction council wants to go. And so the bond bill would be for the next legislative session. So there's obviously time on that, but.
And we had a lot of capital fundraising to do as well.
Prefiling it or, so by the fall, I would say.
But maybe a letter of, of endorsement would be just as good as opposed to say, here's an outright donation. Because my concern, five to seven, that is, that may be a few years.
Yeah, it absolutely could.
And I'm, and I don't know, I guess there could be something in the, in the, in the paperwork. Whereas if it's a donation, maybe with a five year sunset or three year sunset, I have no idea. I mean, we, I think for the most part, we want it to work out. I mean, it's very progressive ideas here. But you get a feel for what we're concerned, our concerns might be as well.
I think, you know, if we could do a letter of intent or whatever and support. And, you know, if they get funding and thinks they're going to get funding, then we could move along after that. Who's maintaining the property now? Other, nothing to do hard other than cut the grass, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure who's maintaining it.
We need to get you to be in charge of that.
You want me to go out there and cut it?
Well, your organization.
Get my tractor out there.
If you want the land, you might as well take care of it.
Well, when you put it in our name, we'll take care of it.
Okay, well, that's.
Do you have any goats in animal control? You can just let them run around and shoot.
We might have to get some goats to maintain that property.
You know, I, I guess I don't.
We can see some.
I don't, I don't know why through all these discussions, hey, I'm, I'm support, I think this is a good idea. The property needs to be used for something, you know? But I guess through all this conversations you've had about doing this, why there hasn't been more of conversations about what's going to happen to the building you're in because that is on county property. You know, is the county going to get it back? Are we going to sell it? You know, what's, you know, so I think that needs to be discussed too.
Shani. Here's your mic, Shani.
I had an idea that you're talking about diseased animals. Why can't you make that an animal hospital for the diseased animals?
We have a clinic.
I mean, well, how can you, could you make that a hospital?
Turn it into a hospital for.
For, for diseased.
I mean, it could be turned into a boarding facility. It could be turned into anything.
Yeah, I mean, where animals could be used, still use it for animal facility. Because personally, if I was interested, I wouldn't want to be in a building that's been had animals in it. You know what I mean?
Well, anybody that purchased that building.
Would have to tear it down.
Yeah, I mean, it would have to, it would have to be.
But I'm just saying to utilize it, yeah, that, utilize it. Couldn't it be used for animals with, with disease? Because you already said you had to separate them.
Well, that's all part of being a shelter is isolating, isolating illness. You have to understand that most of these animals that come into us are unvaccinated. So, you know, it's very common for them to get kennel cough. Most of the, the cats that come into us, you know, the kittens always have upper respiratory when they come in. And that's why you have the proper filtering systems in a shelter so that you're not just constantly spreading and treating disease. And when the shelter was built, it's all on one, one air system. So using that as a area to put sick animals, I mean, there's a huge cost to that. And who, you know, that can't be part of our humane society. The, I can't, I can't have two different facilities that I have to run as one person. But it could certainly be repurposed. It's, it's a complete, it's all concrete. So.
Make a vet's office, a veterinarian may want to buy it.
Yeah, a vet, a boarding facility. I mean, we, we kind of toyed with the idea of US kennels moving into there. But apparently they don't get the kind of funding that we thought they might.
Import animals in from other jurisdictions now?
No. So we, in the very beginning, before COVID, we actually got the shelter down to having only 10 dogs in the entire shelter. So when that happened, then we would pull from Melfa, which is one of our neighboring shelters and from Somerset County, which was one of our neighboring shelters. So if they needed help and it was a dog that we thought we could get in and out very quickly, we would bring in from there. But I actually have a huge pet peeve about these organizations that go out and bring in thousands of animals. And then they have no way to house them when it doesn't work out in the homes that they got placed in. And then they're just, you know, the adopters are just left hanging and, and I have a huge pet peeve about that. So I would bring in a, you know, like we have a very limited amount of small dogs. And we have people that actually are on a waiting list for small dogs. So if it was something I thought I could get adopted, a lab, a small dog, we'd bring it in and get it adopted out. But that wasn't costing taxpayers or anything, any extra money. It was just good networking. And just like we have other rescues that help us when we're in need, we have rescues that help us all over. I've sent to New Jersey. We, we've helped Baywater. And in trade, Baywater has helped us when we've been in need. We've helped Talbot County. They've helped us when we've been in need. I mean, we took in 23 animals in one day and those animals got split between our facility, Baywater, which is in Cambridge and Worcester County. That's, you have to build those networking relationships in the animal world. It's just good practice.
I think to sort of thread the needle, we, we've got two issues here as to whether or not it's an outright donation, whether it's a lease for a dollar or what we may do. Because we don't want to get the cart before the horse.
Exactly.
If we get legal to go in and put up all the paperwork and transfers, okay, here's your donation. There's so many other things we have to worry about. First of all, it has to, we have to make sure it's going to fly. It's going to, you're going to be able to get that funding. So where's that turning point going to be? Where we're going to be able to say, okay, now we can go ahead.
Well, I, I think that we need to have that property so that we can post the signage on there that says future home of the Humane Society. People need, they're visual. They need to see, just like they need to see the plans. I mean, we can say all we want to, but if they can't see a picture of what the new shelter is going to look like, it's not going to mean much to them. So that, you know, I, I don't think that you have to make those decisions now. You just have to show your support and that you're willing to set that property aside for us in the future.
Like Joe said, we haven't done anything with it so many, so many years. And I don't think we're going to do anything with it in the next 10.
Even in the, if the, in the beginning, the intent was just to lease it to us, you know? We can always change down the road.
Well, I think it'd be good to find out from the Eastern Shore delegation, however, what, what, what route may be the best. Because they're the ones that are going to have to be going to bat for the, for the matching grants, I'm assuming.
Right.
Unless we're just going to go straight to, I, I'm not quite sure how the process might work, where you're going to, where you're going to go. But usually I'm guessing it's a legislative matter in Annapolis. Josh, you're more familiar with this than I am.
Yeah, do a bond bill would be. But we would probably, if we donated the property to the nonprofit, that would allow them to have more opportunities to then, to then get matched from multiple funding sources. But we could then have a, I think, an agreement, just like Mr. Illuminati was mentioning, if we had a way to kind of, not say clawback, but pull back. But yeah.
Okay. You had a appraisal done on the property?
No.
You know, that needs to be done so we know the value.
That's true too. I mean, again.
So Mike Lewis may have had that done. I mean, it hasn't been that long ago when he was intending on building on that property.
Legal expenses of donation versus a lease.
I'll have to look into all that.
Okay.
It may have to be surplus too.
It would have to be surplus. You're right. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, we're very preliminary right now. We need this sooner rather than later. But we certainly understand that, you know, we have capital fundraising to do. We have a portion, you know, of our own, of course, to start with. But we just needed to show that we have your support and that we have the property and this is where it's going to be so that people can see.
I don't sense anybody with an outright no on this. Am I right?
No.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Good.
We could just start with the letter of support.
We could do that.
You know, and then go from there.
Okay. Okay.
Letter of support saying that we're going to, like, dedicate this property for the future Humane Society, is that what you want?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, any, we're good? Thanks, thanks for staying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion to adjourn.
No.